We'll call the meeting to order. We'll note that Commissioner Steiner is absent. All other commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the Order of Business. Are there any changes, any additions to the Order of Business? There are no changes. Would there be a motion to approve the Order of Business?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries. Next item then is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the Non-Timetable Agenda. The first item there is some annexations and we'll let Mr. Coling introduce those items.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, there are two annexation resolutions before you. The first one is for Badlands Storage LLC. This is a small subdivision, approximately 3.86 acres, located on the northern edge of city limits. This annexation is requested by the property owner. The property owner is the only landowner that is affected by this annexation or involved in the annexation. You did see the plat for this subdivision that came through a meeting or two ago. Annexation was a condition of approval of that plat and this would square off the city boundaries and provide for the annexation of that property. City staff recommend approval. Be happy to take any questions, Mr. President.
Mr. Coling, is this Resolution 43?
That's correct. Forty-three dash 2014.
All right. Are there any comments or questions regarding this issue? Mr. Coling, would you just briefly explain the annexation process? That even though we would act on these resolutions tonight, it doesn't necessarily mean that the annexation is taking place this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. President. Upon adoption of this resolution, if the commission so approves, we would publish the resolution and provide notice via certified mail to all of the affected landowners. Those landowners then have 30 days following the publication of the notice to file written protest with the city objecting to the annexation. If the owners of more than one-fourth of the property propose to be annexed, file notices that they oppose the annexation or written protests to the annexation, then it is a bar to the annexation proceeding. And that property then would not be annexed to city limits. In the absence of one-fourth of the property owners protesting, then the property does become part of the city limits.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coling. Normally, we don't ask if there's public input on resolutions, but with an annexation, I'll make an exception and I'll just ask if there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this Badlands annexation. You may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name. We'll hear your comments. Is no one that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by commissioners? Not? Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 43 dash 2014?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Mr. Coling?
The next annexation resolution is for Cook Meadow Hills Fifth Edition and some property adjacent to it. This resolution would provide for the annexation of property located along State Avenue North from 21st Street to 40th Street. The east side of State Avenue North has, most of that area has been annexed in. The west side of State Avenue is not. The developer of Cook Meadow Hills Fifth Edition has requested annexation to city limits and has proposed approximately 214 acres of property to be annexed, all located along the west side of State Avenue. In order to provide for consistency of the city's boundaries and in order not to create a hole within our annexation or city limits, this annexation would also take in property east of State Avenue. That property would be owned by Jan Perkel, Two Lots, and Dean Kubis, Two Lots. There's also a couple of properties west of State Avenue, one owned by the Haroff Family and another owned by Montana Dakota Utilities that would also be included within this Again, if the resolution is approved, the city would publish the resolution to provide notice to the affected landowners and allow them the 30 days required by statute in order to file written protest to the annexation. We expect the city commission would meet at the first meeting in September to consider any written protests. We do expect that there will be at least one or two written protests to this annexation. We would meet and determine those protests in September. City staff, however, do recommend approval of this resolution and be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Again, I'd invite anyone from the public that may want to comment regarding this proposed resolution and annexation issue. If you'd like to comment, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any questions or comments by city commissioners?
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve Resolution 44 dash 2014.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion here? Not? We'll vote, then. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to Item B. This is the Family Medical Leave Secondary Employment Ordinance, and Mr. Coling will also introduce that.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this proposed ordinance would make a change to the city's policy with respect to the Family and Medical Leave Act. The ordinance would require that employees who are on approved FMLA leave from city employment would not be permitted to work at a secondary place of employment while they are receiving FMLA benefits from the city unless that secondary employment had been approved by the city administrator. This ordinance was presented before the Civil Service Commission, and city staff and the Civil Service Commission do recommend approval. For your record-keeping, this would be Ordinance 1557.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coling. At this time, we'll declare a public hearing that is open. Anyone that wishes to comment on Proposed Ordinance 1557 may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment on 1557? No comments on 1557. Any comments or questions by commissioners?
Make the motion to approve. Ordinance number 1557.
Second.
We have the motion to approve the first reading and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to Item C. This has to do with the right of first refusal on some city property. Administrator Kessel will introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioners. In your packet contains an agreement between the city of Dickinson and Southwest Water. The concept here is to convey a right of first refusal on three different parcels of land that the Southwest Water is interested in. They are interested in this land because it is surrounding the current treatment plant and they believe that expansion of that treatment plant will occur in the near future. They'd like to have that expansion occur around the existing facility. The pertinent details in terms of price, we would have a, we agreed to have a certified appraiser that is agreed upon by both parties. Choose that appraiser to do an assessment of the property and we would use that assessment and/or a written offer that we may have received from a outside firm. We would then choose the higher of those two, either an appraisal or a offer, and give Southwest Water the opportunity to purchase the property. The timeframe is a 15-year right of refusal, or, excuse me, right of first refusal, and there's a map that's included in your packet as well that outlines the parcels of land that they would like to receive these on. It is Lot 1 and Lot 2, both north of Broadway and north of the 6 million gallon reservoir. And then there's 110 foot strip of land on the east side of the existing 6 million gallon reservoir. That strip of land also contains what is our water building. We'll be vacating that building as we move into the Public Works Building. That was, we just did the ribbon cutting on today and thereby making that property We have reviewed the document. Attorney Coling has as well, and the city staff is recommending approval unless there's any questions. That would end my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions regarding this issue? Not? Is there a motion regarding the contract?
I'll move that we approve the right of first refusal contract.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion? I think just for the record, this is a good thing because it's likely they will expand within that 15-year period and will need the land to treat water for not only Dickinson but all of their customers in the Southwest. So it's, I think it's a good move on part of both parties here. There's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mrs. Nomenick, I think we can get these job descriptions in if you're ready. That'd be Item D. There's a couple of job descriptions that Mrs. Nomenick is seeking approval on.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Yes, we have two job descriptions today. I'm not sure which one is first on your agenda. Senior Property Appraiser is some, one, a position that we were given budget authority for this year to add this position. And so we're just getting around to creating the job description and then we will begin the hiring process on that. This position is to assist the assessor as more of a leader or supervisor for the other staff and then also to assist our assessor with some of his duties that he performs as far as assessing and rating properties and commercial properties. Any questions on this one?
So you have the job description in front of you. Are there comments or questions on it? Any concerns?
Thought it looked good.
Well, we got one thought it looks good, so I think he, I think he speaks for all four of us, so.
Great.
If we would need a motion then to approve it.
I would make that motion. Thought it looked good. I will make the motion to approve it.
Okay, that's great. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the second. Is there anything you want to discuss further here? Not? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
All right. And the second one is a Communication Specialist 2. Right now, in our police department in that area, all we have is the Communication Specialist and we've got, you know, quite a few of them. And then our Public Safety Supervisor. And what we're looking to do here is to have someone in between there that can be more of a shift leader while that Public Support Safety Specialist is not there. More, this person will do more of the training and to be, as I said, a shift leader in the absence of the supervisor. This position will be a promotional position, so it's not an additional position that we're asking for. One will advertise internally and one of the Communication Specialists will move up into this role. So we're looking at anywhere from a 3% to 5% salary increase for one person.
For the general knowledge of the public, when you're talking about a Communication Specialist, you're talking about the people who are 911.
Dispatchers.
Dispatchers.
Yes.
And they operate around the clock.
Yep.
Seven days a week.
That's correct. 12-hour shifts.
And we dispatch for more than just the city of Dickinson.
We do, yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Well, Clayton, what did you think of this job?
I thought this one was quite lovely. She did it. Awesome job. It's, no, it was great. Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Altman blesses it. Does anybody else have any comments or questions or concerns about it?
I would make an emotion to approve this one as well.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the second. Any, any discussion on it? Hearing none, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a 4:45 timetable agenda item, and this is to introduce and give the oath of office to several of our police officers. And Mr. Kessel and Chief Dossinger will handle this item. So Chief?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. At this time, I'm very excited to introduce seven of the newest officers to Dickinson Police Department, both the community and the commission. At this time, when I announce their name, I'd like them not to stand forward and come up here. First one's going to be Officer Tyrell Hanson. Officer Hanson started with us in March of 2013. He's from, is from Winona, Minnesota. He just returned to us from serving a one-year tour. Officer Casey Broston, he started with us in August of 2013 and is from Kalispel, Montana. Officer Shane Holtz started with us in March of 2014, is also from Montana, and he has previously employed with the Stark County Sheriff's Department. Officer Jason Wallace started with us in May of 2014, is from Dickinson and previously was employed with the Stark County Sheriff's Department. Officer Tevin Reddick Papina started with us in May of 2014, also a Dickinson resident and previously employed with Stark County Sheriff's Department. Officer Sean Clancy started with us in April of 2014 and comes to us from Illinois. Officer Justin White started with us in July of 2014 and comes to us from the Minot Air Force Base.
[inaudible] I state the name, support obeyed the Constitution.
[inaudible]
And the laws of the United States, State of North Dakota and City of Dickinson.
And the laws of the United States, State of North Dakota and City of Dickinson.
Best of liability.
Best of liability.
And I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards.
And I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards.
In pursuit of my employment and in the furtherance of the best public interest. Congratulations, gentlemen. Good luck.
Now, don't, don't go anyplace because traditionally, we give you each a turn at the mic and you can introduce any family that you might have and tell us a little bit about, about yourselves. And...
As the chief said, my name's Tyrell Hanson. I started here actually last year in March. I left in end of June for a deployment in Afghanistan. And today with me is my brother Cody. He works for the City Water and Sewer. And my girlfriend Jordan, she teaches at Jefferson Elementary.
Well, good. Welcome back and it's nice to have some family here, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Casey Broston, same with Tyrell. I come from a military background as well, but from Kalispel, Montana. And I just want to thank my wife and for all the support, along with the chief for putting trust in me and obviously everybody in the city, so.
Well, we've had good luck with Montana people here, so we're glad to have you here and...
Thanks, sir.
Sure.
Hi, my name's Shane Holtz. I'm from Brainerd, Minnesota. I worked for Stark County for almost two years and then I just moved over to the police department this spring, so. I got with me my wife Kristen and my son Brody and my daughter Kears.
Very, very good. Where are they at now?
They're sitting right over here.
Right over here. Okay. All right. I see them now. Very good. Well, welcome to North Dakota. Brainerd's a beautiful area.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Jason Wallace, I'm from Dickinson. I previously worked for Stark County for the last two and a half years and I just came over to the PD and I don't think they have any family here today.
Okay. Well, we know you're a good Dickinson resident, so thanks for sticking around and serving here.
Thank you.
My name's Tevin Reddick Papina. I was born in Dickinson and same with a few other guys. Came over from the Stark County Sheriff's Office after about two years of service there. I got my mother Ellie and brother Devin here today. The rest of my family, I don't know where they're at. They're here.
I'm sure they're, they're around someplace, so. But thank you for being here, too.
My name's Sean Patrick Clancy. I'm from Schaumburg, Illinois originally. I have no family here. I came out here because I feel Dickinson is a great community, so.
Is doing police work in Dickinson a little different from the, Schaumburg, is that a suburb of Chicago?
It is. It's about 45 minutes away.
Okay. A little different from the Chicago area?
It is. It is. It's, it's more, it's a bigger urban area, so more urban issues in that area.
Well, we're hoping to not get as big as Chicago, so.
Yeah.
So, but welcome to North Dakota and welcome to Dickinson.
Thank you.
Name's Justin White. Just came off of active duty, six years of service as a military police officer. Pleased to be from North Carolina, was in Alaska for a little bit and multiple deployments. Want to thank the board and the chief for giving me the opportunity. Always wanted to be a police officer since I was a child and seems like Dickinson's going in the right direction, so look forward to serving you and the community.
So were you at Minot Air Force Base then for a while, too?
I was. And I have my wife Catherine here with me today. I have many children. Just have a four-legged child right now, Alaska Mount Mute, so that suffices our kids for the next few years, so.
Well, good. We're glad you're both here. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we speak today, we are fully staffed with 39 sworn officers with one two-week notice that has been submitted, so.
Wow, that's about the first time, well, that's probably the first time in your three year, 10 year that we've been fully staffed and...
Yeah, that's the first time since I've been chief that we've been fully staffed.
Yeah, well, that's great. So it's a good professional-looking group that you brought us today, so.
Thank you.
Well, we'll, we're going to jump down to Item E on the Non-Timetable Agenda. That's a fee resolution at a water vendor and Attorney Coling will introduce that item.
Mr. President, Commissioners, as you stated, this is a fee resolution adjusting the city's fee that we charge for bulk water use. Our fee as included in the 2014 fee schedule is $20 per thousand gallons. This resolution would increase that fee to $27 per thousand gallons. We have sent a letter to the bulk water permit holders letting them know of the rate increase, so they are aware of that and also aware of the reasons why that increase is happening. This would be Resolution 45, 2014, and city staff would recommend approval, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Coling?
Mr. Coling, has there been any resistance? I mean, anybody?
I think Mr. Kessel has been more in touch with the water vendors than I have, so I would refer that to him.
Commissioner Decker, we did send out the letters, letting everybody know. We've done that quite a, quite a ways back. I've not received a call concerning the increase at all. Surprisingly, haven't received a call yet, so that's, that's good news.
I haven't received one either, so.
Good, good.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Motion to approve the fee resolution.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to Item F, which is the proclamation for celebrating Extra Mile Day. And I believe I'm to read this proclamation. It says, "Celebrate Extra Mile Day 2014. Whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2014. Now therefore I, President of City Commission of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2014 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place." Is there any commissioner opposed to me signing this proclamation? Okay, I'm happy to sign it. And I think in Dickinson, North Dakota, we have many citizens who go the extra mile every day, not just on November 1st. So we'll pass this down to Mr. Kessel and he can attest my signature and see that the proclamation gets treated appropriately. Mr. Kessel, I think we can do your reports before we go to our next timetable item.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. The first report that I have for you this night is on North Dakota Sales and Use Tax Statistical Report. You should have received a copy of that report. I'd like to draw your attention to the cover page initially and just point out that this report is for the first quarter of 2014, but it does provide a little historical data on the cover page. In 2012 was the year that most oil impacts were felt, not only in Dickinson but in, across the state. And sales tax went up over 125% that year on a statewide basis. In 2013, they went up 1.6%, and in 2014, so far collectively, they've gone up 4.4%. So it gives you a little perspective on the next figures that I'd like to point out. If you go to page six of the document, it also has a table that includes cities within North Dakota that collect sales tax locally. And it gives you a difference between year-over-year first quarter 2013 and first quarter 2014 on taxable sales and purchases. As you look over that document, you'll notice that Williston still leads the pack in terms of total sales and use, or, excuse me, sales and purchases receipts at $779 million. That is down 1.48% over the previous year. Second on that list is the city of Fargo. They are up to $562 million and a 3.67% increase. Third on the list is Bismarck. They have a 2.2% decrease in sales. And then Dickinson is next. And I really want to point this out because you'll notice that our increase year-over-year was over 24%. That is the largest increase in sales tax collections for the first quarter for a city that falls within the top 12 most populous cities. most populous cities. So I think it's, it's evidence that our economy is strong. It's also evidence that, that the, the economy that is the oil patch is focusing on Dickinson. It is moving south, or it appears to by these statistics. And I just wanted to make sure that you had this information readily available. That will conclude my report unless there's questions specifically.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Do you want to say something about the budget work session?
I do. I've got a couple other reports I'd like to give.
Oh, okay. And when you said concluded your report, I thought you were done.
Oh, you wished. I just wanted to remind the commission that the department heads and myself have been working diligently on the two thousand and fifteen budget. We've spent, spent a great deal of time already putting that budget together. We're gonna meet tomorrow as our staff work session to put a final draft together. And then we'd like to present that budget to you. You've chosen August twenty-sixth to have the, the city commission work session. We'll hold that at the new Public Works Building. And we're looking forward to that event. And then just from the standpoint of a further calendar, on Tuesday, September second, the first is a Labor Day. That would be the first Monday, but we'll have our city commission meeting on Tuesday, the second. More than likely, we'll do first reading of the budget then. Second reading at the September fifteenth meeting, or excuse me, public hearing at the September fifteenth meeting, and then second and final reading at the October sixth meeting. We have to have the budget to the county commission by the end of that week. So it's, it's a tight budget. Once we start first reading, we can change that document all the way up until second reading. So we've got a lot of time to, to make changes that the city commission desires. The next item, and I'll make it quick. I did pass out the capital improvements plan. I just wanted to reference this document really quick. I went over some of the changes that were made the last time in pulling out two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen projects into separate categories. We found that one of the changes that we're gonna have to make again is, is adding another category to the, to the projected cost. We're gonna start pulling out right-of-way acquisition costs, so you can see those more specifically. So there'll be a, a design column, a right-of-way acquisition column, a construction column, a construction management column, a change order, and then a total. Our right-of-way acquisition is taking up a lot more time and costing a lot of money, and so we thought it was worthwhile for you to see that broken out. I did meet with the DOT today. They have done this exact same thing. So we're gonna follow a best practice that the DOT has been providing. We'll probably also pull out right-of-way and design costs and put them in the year in which they're incurred. So it might create a little bit of confusion because they'll be separate from the years of construction, but we'll try to make sure that we carry it together in terms of the total project cost. So this pro, this, this sheet, as you see it today, will, will be revised again, but I think it'll be in a, in a way that is more helpful to, to track the costs in which the year they'll be incurred. And then I just wanted to remind the city commission that I am prepared to speak to the county commission tomorrow to go over the draft ETZ boundaries that we discussed at this, at this body the last time we met. We'll also be discussing the West Dickinson area plan with that county commission so that they are kept informed of, of the intentions and asked to be part of that project. That will conclude my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Do any commissioners have any comments or questions for the city administrator? Okay, then we're going to go back to the timetable agenda at, we have a five PM, and that's to receive the two thousand and thirteen audit report from Ida Bailey. And I'm, sorry, I'm having a senior moment. It's Nora, right?
It is Nora.
But I can't, the last name.
Free.
Free. Okay. Well, we'll let you present the two thousand and thirteen audit report to us.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, city commissioners. Again, as you mentioned, my name is Nora Free. I'm a senior audit manager with, with Ida Bailey. Tonight, I'm gonna go over the different audit reports we're required to give for the city of Dickinson. I wasn't gonna focus so much on the financial statements, just due to the fact that you guys get regular updates and regular financial statements at your meetings. I'm gonna focus more on the reports that we give as auditors on those financial statements. If you have any specific questions for me, feel free to interrupt me or ask me anything you would like to about the financial statements or anything included in our, in our reports as we go along. On page two is, I believe, hopefully we have the exact same page numbering. That's the most important part of our audit. It's the independent auditor's report. And it's broken out into kind of different sections to tell you a little bit about what we're doing. The first paragraph talks about the report on the financial statements. And for a government, it breaks out the different types of opinions we're giving. It'll, it talks about the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and then the aggregate remaining fund information. And that just means we audit things on a different scale. Anything that's broken out particularly, whether it be, you know, the water fund or one of the governmental funds, those are audited at a different materiality. They're assessed a little bit differently to make sure that we're looking at them closely enough. We're looking at the different revenues. We're testing different things. Management's responsibility for the financial statements, that's saying management's actually responsible for the preparation and the presentation of those financial statements. And then what our responsibility is, is to express an opinion on those financial statements. We do different procedures. We take different samples. We do confirmations, different tests across all of the different revenues, assets, liabilities that are had at the government. We don't test every transaction, but we test enough to make sure we feel comfortable that they're free of material misstatement. So there could be small things within there that we're not seeing, but overall, with how much we test, we feel comfortable that the numbers that are presented are accurate numbers of the picture, of the financial position of the city. The opinion is the main portion that most people are, wanna know about. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city of Dickinson. So it's a clean opinion. It means that we didn't find anything of concern within the statements that would cause us to feel that they're misstated. Some of the other paragraphs, in our opinion, are about required supplementary information. Those are some of the schedules in the back where they're required to show a budget to actual for like the general fund and any special revenue funds. So it's not part of the main statements, but we're, they're required to be presented with it. And then some of the supplementary information, and that's more the official directory, naming you guys the commissioners, and then the combining of the non-major funds. We don't audit those. Those are usually smaller funds, so we don't audit them individually because the activity is so much smaller. We audit those kind of as a whole. And then the last paragraph in our independent auditor's report is that, since you guys are a government, you are subject to government auditing standards as well. So there's another report that's in with the federal report, which I believe is in the back of your guys' statements and in back of the comprehensive annual financial report. And there's different requirements that governments are subject to for internal controls, things of that nature that we have to give an opinion on. Any questions on the independent auditor's report on the financial statements? As you can see, the financial, the actual financial statement is a statement of net positions, balance sheets, those things are what follows. Again, you guys get these on a regular basis, so unless there was something that you saw of concern, I wasn't gonna address those specifically since we did have the clean opinion on them. We did make some adjustments in the current year as far as moving some transfers around to make sure that payments on bonds and things of that nature were paid out of debt service funds and then capital projects. Those, any expenditures that come out for capital projects are required to come out through a capital projects fund. So we did move some things around, and we had to move cash around for that reason, but just within the funds, because the loan proceeds go in one fund, but payments on the loan get paid out of another fund. So we did have transfers of that nature. So if they look slightly different, well, quite a bit different, because I know in some of the financial statements, there was some negative cash in a lot of the funds on the city's books, and we were able to transfer them appropriately. So things were paid out of the right funds, so you don't show those large negative balances in any of the funds. So that might be one thing that you would have noticed when you went through here. And I believe there's a, a management letter that you guys also get a copy of that kind of states what some of those adjustments were. I'm one of those small-town German talkers, so I tend to go fast. So if you do have any questions, let me know. If not, then I'm gonna go back to where the federal reports are. And the first report is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards.
Can, you said, did you say you're in the supplementary information?
Well, it's usually in the back.
I was looking for...
We usually bind it separately. The cover page usually looks like this, federal awards. I don't know, did you guys, is there one in the?
Yep.
You have a separate, you have a separate document.
Yep.
So the first report is on internal control and compliance. So what we'll do is we'll do different walkthroughs of the controls that are in place here at the city to make sure they're performing appropriately, different walkthroughs of transactions to make sure that controls are in place to be able to have checks and balances, so nothing, so whether by fraud or error, there would be no risk of things getting materially misstated. And as you can see in there, we talk about a deficiency in internal control and what they are. And we found that there was two material weaknesses, which we'll go over in the summary of findings. And then there was two significant deficiencies. And those are strictly over the financial statements, not the federal awards. And then we also talk about compliance and other matters. And that can be federal grants, state regulations, city ordinances. We do different tests of things that we feel would be direct and material to the city's financial statements. And if we would find any issues of non-compliance, we would report it here, but we noted no instances of any non-compliance over the financial statements. The second report is, due to the fact that the city received over five hundred thousand dollars in federal funds in the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, we're required to do an OMB A133 audit and test specific federal programs. And there's certain standards that we have to go through to be able to pick which programs we're testing and how to test them. There's compliance supplements. And this year, we selected two programs to test as major federal programs. It was the Community Development Block Grant and then also the SRF State Revolving Funds for your guys' water project. And I wanna look just to make sure. I can't remember if it was drinking water or, I have it written down, for clean water, State Revolving Fund. And so we're required to test those separately and report on those. And we had no issues, no findings. Everything was in compliance with what they're supposed to be doing for those federal programs. We found no internal control issues either over anything when we were doing the internal control testing over those specific federal programs. And then page five of that report is the report on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And that's basically listing out all of the federal awards that the city received and spent, actually spent during fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. And so those are labeled on pages six through eight, what you got from which different federal agencies. And you can see by far, the Community Development Block Grants had three hundred thousand, and then the State Revolving Funds, there was almost sixteen million dollars spent in two thousand and thirteen. It was fairly obvious which ones we are gonna be picking this year. It makes it simple. Page eleven is our schedule of findings and question costs. And this is kind of just a nice chart to go through as far as what we're required to give opinions on and what we found during the audit. And it breaks it down by financial statements, what type of report we issued, which was unmodified. That verbage changed a couple of years ago, so that means we didn't have any adjustments to it. And it does say we have some internal control findings over financial statements, but no non-compliance, and then no issues at all with the federal award programs. We'll go on to the findings, and they'll start on page twelve. The first one is the recording of transactions. And just due to the size of the transactions that we record for the city, this is required, we have to call it material weakness because they are material. There were some substantial ones that we had to move from fund to fund. So, but the city chooses to kind of use Ida Bailey to be able to present those fairly and present them in the appropriate funds. We're required to call it a material weakness over recording of transactions if they utilize a separate CPA firm, since by standards, we're not allowed to be part of the internal control process. So that's why that one's there. The second one is the preparation of financial statements, which you guys have seen for many years as well. These are, these are not new findings. These are ones that have been there for numerous years. The majority of our clients, I would say, get the preparation of financial statement findings, especially in governments, because it's really hard for the cost benefit to make sure you maintain certain CP, CPAs on staff who have the knowledge and the background and can get the continuing education to be able to actually prepare a financial statement completely with all notes and stuff without having some errors within it. And that includes the transfers, things of that nature. And that's not just a government thing. That's the wide variety of our small business clients, nonprofits. It's, it's not always a cost benefit for our clients to have a CPA on staff to write their financial statements or to hire a separate CPA to write financial statements, which is what's required of public companies. The third one is the segregation of duties. And that's just due to the, another thing that can be limited just due to a small size of staff. It's hard to separate all duties within the departments to make sure that no one is doing the same things. The city has implemented certain oversight and certain review controls to try and mitigate the fact that sometimes they have to utilize the same staff to do certain things, so it's hard to segregate it completely. So they have implemented some other controls. However, we're required to report it because one individual should never be able to take a transaction completely through. Obviously, there's a risk in that if, if that occurs. Again, not a new finding. And then the fourth one, the department controls over cash is the same, same, and the same line. It's, as far as like things being done with utility, I know for a while, when Tina was here, she would, you know, have to sit at the desk and do things like that and be able to take payments in. And so it makes it a little bit difficult. And as far as tracking some of those small cash payments, and they're immaterial. That's why we don't call it a material weakness, because the amount of actual cash handled is usually pretty minimal, but we're also, we're still required to report it as such. And then on page fifteen, you can see there was no findings over any of the major federal programs that were received in the current year that we tested. So there were no issues there. Everything was handled appropriately. Any questions for me?
Did you find any, any issues of fraud or any issues of mismanagement of, of any of the city's assets?
Nope. There was no findings of fraud or abuse when we did any of our tests in the current year. And we try and actually mix something new in every year as an unpredictable, just for an area that we might not have hit in past years to try and, you know, make sure we're looking at different things that might not get hit every year and that people wouldn't suspect us to look at every year. We don't want to become too predictable, so. But if there's anything that the commissioners would ever like us to see or address, I mean, we are available any times of the year for, for phone calls or concerns or, and when we're planning the audit as well, if there's anything that you would like us to do as part of our procedures or a specific area you would have a concern over, we would gladly work that into our procedures to make sure we're addressing any risks that you feel there would be potential for, too.
Well, I, those of us who live and work in the BAC and labor-stight, and we know that we're understaffed, especially in our financial administrative area, and so being able to structure in such a way that we can have proper segregation of duties is, is almost impossible. And, you know, we hope to get to a point where we'll be able to have more staff and qualified staff in this area, but it's a struggle.
I definitely understand. And we feel it in Bismarck, so I can't imagine what it's like in Dickinson. And like I said, we have a few clients over this way, so we do understand it. It's one of those things where it's more important that you as commissioners know and are aware of it so that you can, you know, just be diligent to watch for things as they come up. But it's sometimes one of those things that cannot be avoided.
Well, it's very difficult, so.
But overall, the staff was very helpful getting us what we needed. And I know we got it done actually quite a bit earlier than in past years with the new bond. There was a bonding deadline, or the, the bonding company likes to have it by the end of June, and so they were able to meet that this year, even with the transition of an interim finance director. So we appreciate Sean and all the staff's hard work to make sure that we were able to, to test everything we needed and to get all the information we needed.
Well, we appreciate you being here and presenting the statements, Commissioners. Do you have any questions or comments?
You know, I'd be curious to know, even though you're not finding material errors, are you seeing anything unusual in comparison? are you seeing anything unusual in comparison to other cities? Any, any imbalances or anything at all unusual in comparison to other cities?
You know, I wouldn't say I would, I'm finding any imbalances. You know, it gets trickier as your guys' revenues continue to climb, to make sure things are being tracked appropriately, so someone like me can come back in and be like, well, you had X number of permits, or you had X, you know, increase in amount of users for these type of things. So it gets a little bit more difficult, we have to do a little bit more digging year to year, but no, we work with the city of Minot, the city of Williston, Bismarck, Mandan, so they're all kind of, things have been a little bit crazy and fluctuations have been there, so I wouldn't say there's anything unusual that we've seen here that we don't see in some of our other communities being affected by the oil and by the influx of people and, and things. And brings, always brings challenges. I mean, it brings lots of new revenues, which we all appreciate, but it also brings its challenges, so, but nothing that we've had concern over specifically that we saw that would cause any red flags on our end.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you for traveling out to Dickinson, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I know it's always so fascinating to listen to, you know, talks about financial statements, so I appreciate your opinion. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Coling, do we need a motion to accept the audit report?
You do, yes.
Okay, would there be such a motion?
I will make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second, is there any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll stay with the timetable agenda. We have a public hearing regarding a rezoning petition, and before we declare the public hearing open, we'll let the Community Development Director Kurtan introduce the item.
Mr. President, commissioners, the first item we have is a rezoning petition for the Westridge Second Subdivision from agriculture to general commercial, medium and high-density residential. Westridge Two subdivision is located immediately to the west from Westridge One off of Westridge Drive and the future extension of 15th Street West. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Let's see, this must be ordinance 1558, then?
Correct.
Okay. So at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open regarding ordinance 1558, this rezoning of the Westridge Second Edition. Anyone who would like to speak may do so now, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Any comments? There's no one from the public that wishes to speak, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Any questions or comments by city commissioners?
I'll move, we approve first reading of 1558.
Second.
We have the motion, the second, is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll stay at the timetable agenda, we have a 525, we have two special use permits, we'll take each one separately, and Community Director Kurtan will also introduce these items.
The first special use permit is for Shelley Lentz, this is a, this is for the construction of a veterinary clinic. She has an existing clinic in town, and she would like to have further expansion capabilities. The site is located in a northwest corner of the intersection of 21st Street West and State Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval with the three attached conditions that are inserted in the adopting resolution. Mr. President?
Okay, are the three conditions acceptable to the applicant?
Yes, the applicant was at the Planning and Zoning Commission. They're aware of the, probably the one that's the most compelling is the third one that requires dedication for 21st Street and State Avenue. She's aware of the, she's aware of the requirement that we need to get dedication in order to finish the road constructions for both projects, and she's working with the city's consultants with respect to negotiating a fair, fair price for that.
Okay. Mr. Coling, this is 46, the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. 46, 2014. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Is there a motion regarding Resolution 46, 2014?
Make a motion to approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote, Mr. Altman, Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Mr. Kurtan?
Mr. President, the next item is a laundry service facility. This will be an, an all-service facility, dry cleaning, and also have a drive-through window. This is a land use that I think all of us would agree is desperately needed in our growing community. I'm very happy to be able to bring this forward. It's located at 1867 Sixth Avenue West in the old Sears location. Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon the one condition of approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners? I think this then is Resolution 47 dash 2014. Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we'll vote, Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. That takes care of the timetable agenda, we'll go back to the non-time table agenda, and that will take us to public safety, and we'll hear the police department's report, Chief Dossinger. And this will be a PowerPoint, right?
Hi, good evening again, members of, Mr. President, members of the commission. I have before you the 2014 Second Quarter Dick and Police Department Report. This report was prepared by Captain Wilkie. Calls for service in 2014 for the second quarter, you can see they had 9,630 compared to 8,392 in 2013. These numbers do not reflect traffic-related calls for service, these are strictly calls involving other items other than traffic-related services. One thing you've noticed, we received several calls regarding suspicious persons and vehicles. We received 407 in 2014 versus 286 in 2013. That's, it's kind of nice to see that, shows us that our community members are vigilant. If they see something suspicious, they're calling us a, they're suspicious person or a suspicious vehicle. We are getting calls regarding that, and oftentimes, that leads, leads into other us combating criminal elements.
Chief, can I ask you to go back to the previous slide?
Yes, sir.
That 9630 is over a quarter, correct?
First two, first two quarters.
First two quarters?
Yep.
So that then would amount to about 50 calls a day, is that sound right for an average? If my arithmetic?
A little bit, little bit more. On a busy weekend, we're seeing over, we can see 90 to 100 calls a single day in the weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Fight calls are slightly on the rise, those are usually the disturbance calls that respond to our local liquor establishments. Those do not include domestic-related calls that occur in an apartment complex or a house, these are the ones that occur at a liquor establishment or outside in a parking lot. Domestic violence calls are also on the rise, we had 169 calls in 2014 versus 138 in, in 911 calls, 1,351 911 calls our dispatchers had, had taken in. As Mrs. Nominick had mentioned before, we're staffed with nine dispatchers and one dispatch supervisor. Our dispatch center has become very busy, not only just taking 911 calls, but other calls for service coming into our, our dispatch center, and we are dispatching for about approximately 24 other agencies, that includes police, fire, and medical in our area. Total arrests are slightly down, 809 arrests for the, in 2014 versus 910 last year. That's from building cases, these are break-ins that occur in, in homes, businesses, 27 for 2014 versus 53 last year. One disclaimer for 2013, 53 of those came from just one single case, it was a, one burglar team that did a chain of burglaries in our community. DUI arrests are slightly down, 105 compared to 2012, similar numbers to that, than that in 2013. Domestic violence arrests, 45 in 2014 versus 47 in 2013. Warrant services, there were 106 warrants that were served in 2014. A lot of times, we're serving out-of-state warrants from other jurisdictions right now. There are seven TASER deployments in, in 2014 for the first two, two first two quarters versus one last year. One thing that we are seeing, especially, you can see that the number of fight calls that we're responding to, we're seeing more use of force incidents involving our officers, our officers having to go more hands-on than they have done in the past. Use of force reports, you can see, this does not include TASER reports, this includes other uses of force, two for this quarter, 2014 versus one last year in 2013. There were a total of 1,800 traffic citations written in 2014 versus 200, versus 1,941 2013. You might ask why our traffic numbers are down, I think the big, two big arguments for that is one, we've ever been short-staffed, and we have at least two new officers on every shift, which ties us up to an FTO, field training. So that definitely takes away from some of our proactive activities. Accents, 722 in 2014 versus 570 in, in 2013. Our truck regulatory, this is one of the first times that we've had a full-time truck regulatory year so far in 2014. So far, he's collected $28,950 in, in overweights. You can see in 2013, we've only had a couple of months where he was utilized, that position wasn't fully staffed at that time. Tactical team callouts are at four, the first two quarters, versus three at this time last Our K-9 program remains very active, we had 92 searches this first part of 2014 versus 28 last year, 16 assists, assist or assist other law enforcement agencies in our area, either the North Dakota Highway Patrol or the Stark County Sheriff's Department. Our CIU callouts, our criminal investigative unit consists of four investigators, if they are called out after hours, we consider that a, a call-out, they were called out 31 times for the first half of 2014 versus 18 for the first half of 2013. Right now, they, they worked at 472 cases for the first two quarters versus 375 last year. Right now, we have over 100 open cases that they are currently working amongst the four Kind of a recap of some of the grants that we've had so far in the first two quarters, the TACE simulcast system project is well underway. We did receive two patrol cars under the Doyle Impact Grant that have been purchased, and our wheel's on the ground right now. And also the, the command vehicle project, what had been before you in the past is also underway. We applied for a COPS grant position, which would be a school resource officer and a task force officer. We've also applied for Homeland Security Grant, which will allow us to increase our medical equipment for our tact team vehicle and also our patrol vehicles, and also a stop domestic violence grant, which will allow us to purchase cameras for our squad car, digital cameras for our squad car. One other thing I want to talk about is this, this Thursday, August 7th, we're going to host the National Night Out downtown. National Night Out is really a community-building campaign that is designed to heighten crime prevention awareness, generate support, participation in local anti-crime programs, and strengthen neighborhood spirits and police community partnerships. We are asking individuals that night to leave their outside porch lights on, that evening signifying their support for, for National Night Out. We have joined forces with the Alive at Five that evening, we are going to be downtown hosting a festival, we're going to have public safety vehicles on hand for display, kids' games, safety booths, ice cream to hand out to the, the kids and to the families, and of course, Gwen Sebastian's going to be performing downtown later that evening, so looking forward to a very, very nice community night downtown.
Thank you, Chief. Now, are there questions or comments for Chief Dossinger?
Mr. President, I have a few. On the suspicious person's vehicle, do you have a percentage you know which actually lead to an arrest or on, on those calls?
You know, I would say about 25% of them often lead into some type of drug interdiction or other warrant service or other arrest.
And when the SWAT or the Southwest Tactical's called out, but typically, what kind of calls are those?
Those would be a high-risk, high-risk event, such as a, a high-risk warrant service, an armed barricaded situation, or an incident that we know is a higher risk for both the community and the officers to respond to.
And the Bearcat that's on there that you, is that in addition to the vehicle you have now?
No, that's not, that's what we currently have.
Okay, that is a Bearcat, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. As a follow-up to one of Mr. Decker's questions with the tactical team, again, that's a team that serves a wider area than just the city of Dickinson, so when we see your reported number of call-outs, some of those call-outs can be outside the city limits.
That's correct. We service the southwestern North Dakota. We have been in Dunn County, Billings County, Hettinger County in the past.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
President Johnson, I just want to thank Chief Dossinger for working with the Alive at Five event. The original National Night Out was going to be held elsewhere, and once, learning of the Alive at Five event and Ms. Sebastian's attendance, they changed their event to coincide and, and really create a, a community effort. So I just wanted to commend Chief Dossinger and his staff for making an already fun downtown event better.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We'll go to tab six, engineering, and item A, there is a task order, and, Mr. Kubis, are you doing this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, commissioners, I have four agreements, actually one task order and, and three agreements before you. All of these stem from an RFP that city staff had issued a couple of months ago, most of them relating to transportation work within the city. I'll take it from the top, the first one is a task order, the reasons for task order versus just an engineering agreement was, for Apex, we already have a master task order in place, so theirs was issued as a task order. And this task order with Apex will include the Special Improvement District for water, sewer, storm sewer, and street improvements in the Westgate Industrial Acres subdivision. That is the area around Dickinson Ready Mix. It was previously platted, but the streets and the water and the sewer weren't installed when the plat was, was filed. The total project cost estimate is 1.1 to 1.3 million dollars. The agreement is for design and construction engineering and is an hourly not-to-exceed amount of $184,568. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kubis. You've heard his introduction and recommendation, are there comments or questions here by commissioners?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve the task order, again, is there any, any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote, Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. So, Mr. Kubis, you may continue.
The next agreement is with civil science. This agreement will include traffic counts at nine intersections in This agreement will include traffic counts at nine intersections and up to five signal designs at intersections that would warrant signals. It also includes interim improvements for State Avenue, Twenty-first Street, and Fifteenth Street West. The total project cost is estimated at one-point-five to two million dollars. This engineering agreement is for design engineering and is an hourly cost not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten dollars. City staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any comments or questions for him? You've heard his introduction and his recommendation. Mr. Kubis, when you said the cost is one-and-a-half, two million dollars, you were talking about the total project costs and not just the engineering cost?
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding the agreement with civil service or civil science?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second, any discussion? We'll vote, then, Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next agreement is with Westwood PS, Westwood Professional Services, and it also includes traffic counts at nine intersections, up to five signal designs, and interim improvements for the corridors along Tenth Avenue East, Museum Drive, Fourteenth Street, and Twenty-first Street East. The total project cost estimate, again, one-point-five to two million dollars. And this engineering agreement is for design engineering and is a lump sum of one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars. City staff recommends approval. Are there any comments or questions on this agreement?
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any questions? Would there be a motion regarding the agreement with Westwood Professional Services?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries.
And the final agreement is with Alteg. Alteg Engineering is, has been selected for the design of the safety improvements and landscaping enhancements within the right-of-way of South State Avenue. If you remember, about ten months ago, we had residents from that neighborhood that came before the commission with concerns of safety. There'd been two accidents in the past two or three years where vehicles had left the roadway. This project would design the safety enhancements. Right now, we're anticipating that'll be some form of guardrail. And to finish off the landscaping enhancements, city staff has already begun that process. Some trees were planted earlier this spring. We'd fill that in and install guardrail. The total project cost estimate for this project is thirty to forty thousand dollars. And the engineering agreement is for design engineering only in an hourly not-to-exceed amount of thirteen thousand five-hundred dollars. City staff recommends approval. Is there any questions or comments on this agreement?
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any comments, questions? Now, is there a motion regarding the contract with Alteg Engineering?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
I'm going to turn it over to Engineering Specialist Loretta Marshick for the next item.
Okay, she's going to talk to us about a change order.
Good evening, President Johnson, Commissioners. This change order has to do with our west twenty-four-inch water transmission line. With the design of the grade separation on State Avenue, there was some pier relocations, which is causing us to adjust our alignment of this water line. And that's what we bring forward today. That change order is in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and fifty cents. This also would add ten days of construction to the project, giving us a completion date of July 10th of 2015. City staff recommends approval of this change order.
Okay.
Any comments and questions?
Thank you, Ms. Marshick. Any comments or questions about this change order? Would there be a motion regarding the change order request?
Motion to approve?
There is a second.
Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve, change order number one. Any discussion? Hearing none, then, will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Public Works. Public Works Director Zurov, do you have any project updates or reports?
President Johnson, Commissioner, I don't have any specific updates tonight. At last commission, most of the sewer projects were updated. I think all those are currently on schedule. I did want to bring up the ribbon cutting today, I think went well. I appreciate everybody that attended. So unless you have any specific question about projects, I don't have any update.
This was the ribbon cutting for the Public Works Building and the new animal shelter and was headlined by Governor Darumpel was here. He was very, well, it was very nice of him to make time in his busy schedule to come out to Dickinson and I think he was very complimentary and very gracious in his remarks about the project and the city's efforts here. So I think it was a really nice event. And I know City Administrator Kessel took him by, I think, did you, were you able to take him by the wastewater treatment facility?
I was pleased. He jumped in the car with me and we went down to the wastewater treatment facility and gave him a tour. And that always seems like we have rain prior to a tour of that facility and we don't have paved roads out there yet. But we got through and he appreciated the project.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Zurov?
I have one. Mr. Zurov, I know you've been patching and whatnot on the seal project. When will actual seal coating be starting, do you know?
Originally, it was the second week of, or originally it was the end of July, I believe. Next week, we're going to start the actual chipping.
So the bulk of that's going to happen over probably about three weeks?
Right. Right.
Okay, I bring it up only so the public can be prepared for that?
Yes.
Because it will be inconvenient?
It will be inconvenient. It will go quick and it will affect a major portion of the city.
If we can get most of it done before school opens, it'll be less of an inconvenience.
Right. Yeah. President Johnson, I have one more thing I guess I'd like to bring up. Currently, the water restrictions are still in effect. I would maybe like to meet with Administrator Kessel and see if we still need to have those, the restrictions in place. Today, we, of course, got a lot of rain. We are getting adequate water to our tanks now. We have had some compliance, not a lot of compliance, but enough compliance to alleviate our problem that we had when we started the water restrictions. Currently, the water restrictions are, we don't want any lawn watering from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and that on odd days, on odd dates, odd addresses can water from 7 till midnight and from midnight, or from midnight to 7:00 and from 7:00 PM to midnight that day. So I think we need to address that and probably get another public service announcement out as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zurov. Anything else, any other comments? Mr. Kessel?
If I could, President Johnson, I'm glad Public Works Director Zurov brought that up. I think there's a lot of confusion in the public with regard to what is being restricted. And at this time, we're only restricting two things. And for the public, it's lawn watering. That's really it. We have also restricted ourselves in the terms of doing hydrant flushing and things. But for the public, it's simply watering your lawns during the times that Mr. Zurov has explained. And I received some of the phone calls myself and had to explain that to people. So I just wanted to point out that the only restriction we have today is simply lawn watering.
And again, the issue isn't that Southwest Water can't make enough potable water, they can. The issue is we don't have the pumping capacity to pump it fast enough to fill our tanks overnight.
Especially in the northern pressure zone.
Right.
That's been the difficulty. Yeah, the central part of town, we haven't had an issue with keeping the tanks and the area supplied with waters. The area north, which of course our finished water pump station, and our new west water reservoir will set us, or will help alleviate that problem next year.
I suppose it has to do too with the distance, then you have to push the water.
Right, we're trying to push a lot of water north where we didn't have that many residents and commercial in that part of town, and that's why we're building the reservoir pump stations and booster stations.
Okay. Anything else from Public Works?
I do not have anything else, President Johnson.
All right. Well, last, I think it was last meeting or two meetings ago, we talked about additional snowplow equipment. I thought I should go ahead and start that process. So you'd have the proper equipment to clear the bypass. Have you been able to locate equipment and place an order?
We have placed the order for the chassis, to add on to the DOT bids that will be, been able to acquire next year. We are looking at a chassis right now to build the truck for this fall. We haven't purchased it yet, but we're, we've got some leads.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go to Tab 8, Community Development, and there are a couple of items there, and Mr. Kretan will introduce them.
Mr. President, the first item is the final plat for West Ridge Second Edition. We had talked about the rezoning a little earlier in the evening. This is for the final plat itself, which is located in northwest quadrant of the I-94 interchange at exit 59. The plat itself is one-hundred-and-fifty-three acres, planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kretan. Mr. Coling, this must be Resolution 48. Okay, so it'd be 48-2014. Are there comments or questions regarding this final plat resolution? Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 48, 2014?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none, then, will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Mr. Kretan, anything you'd like to highlight on the building permit report?
I'd like to highlight some sections under the new building permit issuance, new building permit values, and then the last one, fees remitted to the city. Under commercial structures, we're behind from last year. Actually, the totals that I'll be discussing this evening, we're all behind from last year. As of the date, as of the end of July, we've issued twenty-three commercial building permits compared to forty-one of last year, a forty-four percent reduction. Single-family structures are still lagging well behind. We have one-hundred-and-twenty issued thus far this year compared to one-hundred-and-ninety-three from last year. The same thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent reduction applies for total building permits issued compared to last year. Multi-family housing units, which would mainly include our apartments and then total housing units. Total housing units this year that we have permitted is two-hundred-and-eighty-eight compared to four-hundred-and-fifty-seven from last year. New building permit values, we're at one-hundred-and-forty-seven million compared to two-hundred-and-thirty-three million from last year. One big positive note that we do have is that the budgeted amount for revenue for the city from building permits, we had, we had it budgeted at eight-hundred, at eight-hundred-thousand dollars, and we are at eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine as the end of July. So we will well exceed that this year because we have several months to go as part of the building, building, building activity. So that's one positive note that we are well above what we had projected figures as far as part of building permits.
In terms of the permits themselves, are we running behind last year in your view because there's, you know, there's less demand for commercial buildings and housing? Or we just lack the necessary city infrastructure to support more construction, more permits?
The latter is, I think, we still have a little bit of a lag. We've caught up in some areas. We are releasing, and you'll notice that in the next subsequent months, that we'll have a couple more final plats come through because we found out through additional tweaking of the system and better modeling that we could allow them to move forward. But due to the late juncture that these are coming through, they're not going to come online this year. The cost of land financing has had something to do with it. It's definitely not from demand. You know, as City Attorney Kessel had mentioned, our sales, you know, sales revenue is coming in very well. I'm still talking with the developers specifically on the commercial side, and they are saying that, you know, the infrastructure had kind of pushed them back and they may not be able to make it this year. But next year, I'm anticipating it to be a very robust year because the pinup demand that we have this year, plus the normal demand that we will have, we could potentially come close to what we did in 2012. Because we would have corrected a significant portion of our infrastructure, sewer, water, and also roads to be able to accommodate development. So I'm anticipating 2012 to be a very big banner year, and that will be indicative of our budgets and I think other budgets as well. So it's just that this year and our infrastructure has kind of really slowed us down and we've lost a year for a lot of, a lot of development.
So you think 2015 could be on par with 2012?
That's my early projections based upon what I'm hearing from the developers. Not going to be in single-family though. I'm talking more commercial and single-family's going to go up and a lot of apartments will be built because this year they're just weren't able to get them together. So we're really working hard on trying to figure ways to be able to allow some of these projects to move forward. And next year, with our capacity issues somewhat resolved, and many of them will be resolved, we'll be able to push forward on a lot of projects that have been on hold.
Thank you, Ms. Kretan. Are there other comments or questions for Community Development Director? All right, well, then, are there any issues by city commissioners? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is no one, we do have someone from the public, okay.
Mr. President, Commissioners and City Staff, just one comment. This is a delightful meeting. It's really enjoyable to see a town work this hard to accommodate the growth in the Bakken. Well done. I just am here to explain a little bit about our project, which is the...
No, excuse me. I know who you are and they know who you are, but we're being televised and so you, why don't you state your name and introduce yourself and then go ahead with your...
All right, I'm Ken Williams, Williams Civil Construction. We've been in Dickinson just about a year and a half now. We're working on the wastewater treatment plant, and then we're working on the west pump station with that force main through, through the town. I just want to announce to the commission that last week, we successfully bored the Hart River. That went very well. We completed the direct dig of the Hart River, so that went very well. And your reference to the extra mile, we've got three crews in town and they're going the extra mile. They're working six and a half, seven days a week to get this project done. We have, we've had a little difficulty on Fifth Street. We've been able to transition to other parts of the project. We did experience high water table and loose soils there, so we've stepped back almost a month, five weeks, and we're working with Apex to work through redesigning the installation of that pipeline. And we really appreciate the neighborhood being patient. We know a lot of those people on a first-name basis, whether it's Skip or Joanna or Emo. But we just want to say to the community, thanks for the patience, and I think... but we just want to say to the community, thanks for the patience, and I think with Apex, we've, we've got a strategy, maybe, to get that force main in on the schedule. We do have concerns about the fifteen-inch gravity sewer. We've met with Gary and city staff members, and we hope to work through that. Appreciate the community. Delightful meeting, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the commission? There's no one else from the public, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. The motion carries.